I'd call the monthly Board of Education meeting to order. Can I please, everybody rise for pledge allegiance?
We just see the flag of the United States of America and see the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make the motion.
Mr. Quinn makes the motion. Do I have second?
Second.
That's Ralph's second. All favor show of hands. Motion carries. Citizens' dissipation and statements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two individuals approved to speak this evening. The first one asked per board policy BDDH, by the way. The first one is Dan Neville, speaking on the item of mitigation efforts for next year.
Mr. Neville, thank you for coming. Please state your name and address.
Do I need to say my address? Dan Neville, Waynesville parent. Shalom Mountain. Is that good?
Fair enough. As a reminder, you have three minutes to provide your comment. Starts when you start.
So, Dan Neville, a parent of three amazing girls. You know, the truth is, I'm actually nervous, but I'm not nervous from talking here today. You know, I'm nervous about my kids' future because I see a future right now where we can't challenge an official position. And a future that you're looked at sideways for asking medical questions to people that should provide you some answers. You know, after sitting in the school board's study session, I understand looking out that you all want the same thing. You want the same thing for my kids that I want for my kids, which is the safety. But I want to make sure that we're asking the right questions about child masking. Are we actually doing the research evaluating mental disorders and suicides? Because if you see the news like I do, thirty percent is up in mental issues with kids, just in St. Louis County alone. I see a lot of fear, you know, and fear drives this. We're convinced, we're convincing parents and teachers that their kids are in danger of dying every day from coming to school. My kids come home asking me, Dad, am I going to die from this? And I have to sit down and have a conversation with them because they're getting yelled at about pulling their mask up. And my daughter, my oldest, comes home and she has anxiety because she said, Dad, I had to cough in school today. I was nervous about that. I cried in the bathroom because I had to cough. That's what we're pushing our kids to do. And if you're watching the news and the news feeds, you think thousands of kids have actually passed away from COVID. Now, look, one kid is too many, and even researching this, it breaks my heart to bring it up. But I talk to hundreds of parents a month, emails, text messages. They come knocking on my door. They want to come swimming in my pool. I've made friends with them at this point. And I say, you know, you'd be surprised at how many kids have passed away because of COVID. Did y'all know it was two hundred and forty kids that we lost because of COVID in twelve months? We lost two hundred and forty. The year before that, we lost two hundred and forty-five because of influenza. Where was the outrage when influenza was happening? Where are these mask mandates and these things? Are we asking the right questions? And I'm just asking. I want to know. According to the CDC website, like I said, two hundred and forty, we lost two forty-five from influenza. During the pandemic, I asked some questions, and I got fifty-seven seconds. Three minutes goes quick. I asked the Health Department, I asked some other folks. I said, you know, what happened to the flu? I said thirty-nine million cases of the flu in two thousand and nineteen. And I was informed by people that should inform me that, in fact, you know, the flu was eradicated because of mitigation policies. These are the questions we should be asking. It was next to zero. It's because of masking, social distancing, washing your hands. But, look, COVID-nineteen and influenza are the molecular twins. They look the same. They act the same. They infect the same. So I'm being told our mitigation policy has actually quelled COVID-nineteen, right, or influenza, but COVID-nineteen was able to go wild. I've already ran out of time. I had a lot to talk about. But I do want to ask, that we give parents the choice. Give me back my choice as a parent to say, you know what, I'm going to do what's best for my kid, and I want to put them in the best situation to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neville.
Yes, Brian Rush.
Thank you for being here today, Mr. Rush. I asked that you state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, and when you start.
Brian Rush, St. Robert parent, spouse of a staff member of the school district, left-handed. The proposed COVID mitigation plan includes an effort to provide vaccinations to educators, staff, and students if eligible, and efforts to provide vaccinations to educators and other staff and students. Vaccination events and incentives provided for vaccination. Although I'm sure you all have the best intentions, and you are all ultimately qualified, I urge the highest level of caution. And, in fact, do not be associated with any kind of district promotion of a medical procedure. And I base my caution on CDC data. Everyone says we're just following CDC guidelines. Well, we're going to dig inside the CDC VAERS system reports. These are reports from doctors, medical professionals, of what these vaccines are doing to children. I'm going to read direct reports from the CDC VAERS data. If we're following COVID guidelines based on CDC guidelines, we also have to, we also have to listen to the CDC warning bells that they're telling us. The CDC VAERS system discloses that there have been over six thousand associated deaths with the vaccine. Six thousand associated deaths with the vaccine, and that's in just over six months. This is the CDC VAERS system, V-A-E-R-S. Everyone, please confirm the source so you know I'm not lying to you. As an employer, the school district is ultimately responsible for the physical, psychological, or financial harm that a district policy may cause on their staff members or their students. A study by JAMA, the Journal of American Medical Association, detailed that U.S. military members, average age of twenty-five, who received the vaccine were experiencing myocarditis and inflammation of the heart at a higher rate than expected. I'm going to get into the actual CDC VAERS data in my last minute. And this is directly from the website. This is directly from a doctor's report. And if you guys want the source, please feel free to come up to me after this. Patient received second dose of Pfizer vaccine on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, while at work. March eighteenth, her five-month-old breastfed infant developed a rash, and within twenty-four hours, was inconsolable, refused to eat, and developed a fever. Patient brought baby to local ER where assessments were performed. Blood analysis revealed elevated liver enzymes. Infant was hospitalized but continued to decline and passed away. Diagnosis of TTP, no known allergies, no new exposures, aside from the mother's vaccination the previous day. I urge the highest levels of caution. Do not promote this vaccine. Do not incentivize programs with this vaccine. When the members of this community associate the vaccine consequences with your policies, at the end of the day, you're responsible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Written communications, Dr. Henry.
No written communications this time, Mr. President.
Citizens' update, military report.
Good evening. I'm Egan O'Donoghue from Fort Leonard Wood. Just a few reminders today. Those accessing Fort Leonard Wood are required to wear a mask unless they are fully vaccinated, which is the two shots, this Pfizer second shot, or the Moderna one shot, and two weeks afterwards. While the vaccination is one hundred percent voluntary, General Leonard Wood Army Community Hospital has stood up a vaccination clinic inside the PX for all TRICARE beneficiaries. And Fort Leonard Wood continues to work very closely with the Plaski County Health Department for the health and safety of our community, both inside and outside the gate. A few upcoming events. We do have a thirty-July luau party at seven-thirty at the Recplex as kind of a back-to-school for those of you who'd like to join us. And we are planning a field day back-to-school event as well, and please watch for more details. Those will be advertised on our website and our Facebook. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Any comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
District announcements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The public is invited to our open house at Waynesville Middle School on Monday, August the ninth. The event will kick off outside with free food at five P.M. A brief outdoor ceremony will be held at five forty-five, followed by ribbon cutting. Tours will be given from six to six-thirty. And in the event of inclement weather on August ninth, the event will be moved to August tenth. And if it rains on the tenth, then it'll be moved to the eleventh. That's it after that. The Waynesville R-six School District will provide many school supplies for free at the start of this school year through ESER funds. That's the stimulus we received during the pandemic. Students will need backpacks and other supplies, but many of the supplies that they typically would get will be taken care of through the district this year. New families who have moved into the Waynesville R-six School District may go online and enroll in their students, enroll their students by going to the district's website and clicking on the New Student Info tab. Students who are returning to the district do not need to enroll. Screenings for the preschool children ages three through four who live in Waynes, in the Waynesville R-six School District are now being scheduled for the Williams Early Childhood Center to schedule a screening appointment for July twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, or twenty-ninth. Please call five-seven-three-eight-four-two-two-zero-five-zero. All ninth graders and all new students entering tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade should register for the August thirteenth Transition Day at Waynesville High School. The registration link is on the high school website. Students will need to be registered by August the sixth. Before the start of the two thousand, or the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year, eighth graders will need to have two vaccines, and seniors will need to have one unless they're exempted. Eighth graders will need the TDAP and the meningococcal vaccine. Seniors will need the meningococcal vaccine. Link to the immunization information is located in the center of the district's main webpage. To participate in athletics and band, remember you need to have a physical. That's coming up. Many things going on right now this time of year. We, at this time, we were planning to hold modified in-person Meet the Teacher nights. We ask if at all possible, one parent and the child or children who go to the school attend Meet the Teacher. Meet the Teacher nights are scheduled as follows. Williams Early Childhood Center and the Waynesville Sixth Grade Center will be held from four to six P.M. on August the eighteenth. Elementary schools for our students, grades K through five, will be four to six P.M. on the nineteenth. Secondary schools for our students in grades seven through twelve, five to seven P.M. on the twenty-fifth. As a reminder, our Fort Leonard Wood Schools and Sixth Grade Center will open back up on August the second. And the first day of school for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year is Monday, August the twenty-third. Marianne loaded me down this time, I'll tell you.
We just hand out diplomas?
We did. We did, yes.
Do I have the most improved consent agenda items, A through G, if there's no question or comment? Pondra makes the motion. Do I have second?
Second.
Ralph makes second. All favor show of hands. No motion carries. Discussion item, Parker Fine Arts Renovation Project update, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. The facility improvement to Waynesville Middle School Phase Three, Parker Fine Arts project, has been approved by the DCP to begin construction. The contract for Cale's construction has been reviewed and submitted for board approval tonight. Once approval, we will determine a date and time for the kickoff meeting and discuss the progress meetings from then on out.
Comments or questions? Summer school report, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Included in your board documents is the two thousand and twenty-one summer school report, which reflects our June summer school. Summer school looked a little bit different last summer, so we were back to a more traditional summer school this year. We had three hundred and twenty-one high school students complete the first session and two hundred and twenty-five complete the second session. And then, at the elementary level, we had eleven hundred and twenty-five students who participated in our summer school. So we're very excited with those. Down some from where we've been in past years, but we look at that to continue to grow back up next year as things get to a more normal sort of pace.
Comments or questions? Federal Programs report, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to give our federal programs evaluation. I'll go over funding, federal programs activities, as well as goals related to our federal programs. Our federal programs, there are four funding sources. We have Title I-A, and I'll go into a little bit more about what each of these are, Title I-D, Two-A, and Title III. Under Title II-A, you'll see that there was a Title IV transfer. Title IV is a fairly new funding source within the title programs, but we were doing many of the activities that were within there already. So we actually moved that funding over to Title II-A to support professional development. All told, about one point one million dollars in federal programs funding. So Title I-A is improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged. Our Title I buildings are East Freedom Partridge in Wood. They look at their own internal building needs to determine how they're going to use the funds that are allocated for them. So some buildings have intervention teachers, instructional coaches, behavior intervention specialists. Also helps to support professional development activities, technology, supplemental instructional materials, and parent involvement activities. We also support our students who live in transitional living situations. Title calls that homeless. We call it transitional living. Also, we use title funding to support our PACE preschool program, which provides one hundred and fifty slots, and our students are screened to determine placement within the program so that we have the students with the most need being placed into the program first. Title I-D is funding that goes to support our students at Piney Ridge Center. Last year, we had approximately sixty students by the time we ended the year. They should be back up to about ninety students throughout this school year, which is where they have typically been in previous years. We will support, last year, we supported one virtual classroom teacher. This year, we will actually have two. We use the funding to support virtual education licenses, instructional materials, and then professional development for the staff. Title II-A is for preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals. One of our district instructional coaches is paid for through there. We use it to support our new teacher induction program, and then professional development activities that support our district C sub goals. Title III supports our English learners, so we just provide supplemental materials, and also one of our paraprofessionals is paid for out of that funding. We do have some goals that we look at. One of our goals is that we will increase our math scores in ELA and math by two percent per year, with two thousand and eighteen being our baseline year. We did meet that goal from eighteen to nineteen. Of course, in two thousand and twenty, we did not have testing, and we won't have our two thousand and twenty-one results available until this fall. Goal two is that seventy-five percent of students will read on grade level as measured by the district benchmark reading assessment. We did not quite make that goal, so that is definitely one we'll still continue working towards. Goal two is that seventy-five percent of students will achieve mastery in our local common assessments in English language arts. And overall, we did make that goal, with seventy-six percent of students meeting that. Goal three, we look at our preschool students, and seventy-five percent will meet the Missouri Early Learning Standards in ELA and math. And we did meet that with eighty-six percent in ELA and eighty-three percent in math. Goal four, we look at our English language learners and their performance on the access test, which is a test that our English learners take every year. And we were looking to increase by two percent each year the number of students scoring five or higher. And we did make that progress from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. And that two thousand and twenty test happened about a month before COVID hit us. So they were able to do all their testing in the spring of two thousand and twenty. We did make that progress, but you'll see from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, we did go backwards, and we could really see that impact of being out of school and what that had on our students. And then our goal five is that one hundred percent of teachers in core content areas will be highly qualified. That means they have the appropriate certifications for what they're teaching and appropriate training, and we did meet that goal. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Discipline report, Mrs. Long.
Hi, good evening. It's my pleasure to bring with you the discipline report from this past school year, the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. And just a note, as we go throughout it, there are times when we typically look at comparison years. This year, I chose to compare this past school year with the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year due to the comparable percentage of amount of in-person learning comparing to last year. As we let out on March sixth, obviously, made it a little bit more difficult to compare those two years. So this starts out with the amount of district referrals district-wide. This is our six-year trend. You can see we experienced continuing decreases in the amount of referrals. And this is a breakdown by building per year as well for the past six years. And you can see that seven schools had a decrease in overall number of referrals. The number, the decrease in referrals can be attributed to some really good work in East and Freedom by our student support teams, and some really good addressing behaviors in those building, as well as that work has continued into the Sixth Grade Center at the very end of this year, and we look forward to continuing that work next year. Increased structure in areas such as hallways, playgrounds, cafeterias, that are typically places where a lot of discipline referrals will result in, as well as an increased amount of structure in unstructured areas and times, such as passing periods before and after school. So with a lot of that structure that was in place for other reasons during the school year, we actually saw a result in behavior issues and discipline referrals. This is a breakdown of discipline incidents by incident type for Waynesville High School for the past three years. And again, they saw a pretty, pretty good decrease overall in discipline incidents, and the breakdown was fairly comparable to that particularly of the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. And still looking just at the high school, this is the three-year trend. The top bar graph will show you the number of incidents divided by race, and the bottom is the percentages. This is the Waynesville High School and Waynesville Career Center suspension three-year trend. I have one change to make on this, on the ASP short term. And when I re-looked at this, the thirty-five for this year is actually incorrect. That should be a hundred and twenty-one. It was, didn't get changed from last year's number. So this year, a hundred and twenty-one days of suspension in ASP, which is the alternative suspension program. And you can see, as you can see, we continue to utilize that program, which is a great way to keep our students in-person learning in the school setting, even whenever a suspension is in place. Here again is a breakdown at the middle school by incident type for the past three years, so comparison. They as well saw a break, a decrease in overall number of referrals. And again, the three-year trend in incidents by race with the number at the top and the percentage at the bottom, very comparable numbers from the eighteen, nineteen to the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school years. And suspension three-year trend for the middle school, you can see they also are taking advantage of the ASP short-term suspension program as well. This is a breakdown of serious consequence in incidents that resulted in either ice, either in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension infractions for elementary schools for the past three years, and that's broken down by building. Sixth grade center, discipline incidents by race for the past three years. Again, raw data at the top and percentages for comparison at the bottom. Here is a breakdown for our elementary schools. This entire chart is all the raw data numbers for the breakdown by race for the past three years for each of the elementary schools. And then for comparison, here are the percentages. And after reviewing both this data, as well as each building receives detailed reports for their building, and after working, I work with building principals in each building to create a plan for the upcoming school year to address specific goals and targeted areas for improvement for each of their building as we go into and plan for the next school year, and what supports that they need in place as far as behavior and discipline. Any questions?
Any comments or questions? Thank you, Mrs. Long.
Thank you.
Move on over to the script, action items. Job description, second reading, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration recommends approval of the following job descriptions as presented. Two-point-twenty-one-point-three Coordinator of Alternative Education/Transitional Living. Four-point-six-point-four Transportation Driver/Trainer/Driver/Dispatch. Four-point-seven-point-one-A Transportation Secretary. Four-point-seven-point-one Transportation Secretary. Four-point-seven-point-two Routing Specialist. And a title change to Administrative Assistant/Transitional Living Coordinator is reflected in the job description. Two-point-twenty-one-point-three to Coordinator of Alternative Education/Transitional Living.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
You said that. Pondra, all favor show of hands. A motion carries. Do you approve that? Got motion carries, seven oh. Twenty-two thousand and twenty-two measures, item B, Miss Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Per board policy, EBB mitigation measures are based on the guidance from DHSS, County Health, and the CDC. COVID numbers are monitored by our district staff daily. Due to the fluidity of the situation and the need to respond in a timely manner, it would not be practical to seek board approval each time a shift in prevention strategy is needed. However, administration will communicate changes and seek input. The district is taking a layered approach to regarding mitigation strategies to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen and is working with the local health department to attempt to develop a tool that could be utilized when making decisions about the use of masks as one of those prevention strategies. The district will start actively monitoring students' numbers August first, and we do not know where we will be exactly when school starts. However, I want to ensure everyone that our top priority remains student safety and providing uninterrupted seated instruction for our students. With that, as of July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the district administration recommends optional masking for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, except for district transportation, which will continue to require masks for students and personnel. However, we strongly recommend staff and students to read and follow recent CDC guidance regarding masking in schools. In addition, if county health, DHSS, and/or virus levels dictate the need to transition, the district will move to mandatory masking as suggested.
Comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Dr. Form makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Orange, second. All favor show of hands. Against?
Yeah, Mr. President, if I just make, make the statement that it's very imperative that they understand that we're making this decision based off of the readings of the levels now, and that it can change.
That's correct.
So, approved.
Motion carries four-three. SR CSP, Miss Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration requests approval of the CR CSP guiden, guidebook as presented. Additions are in blue and deletions are in red.
Comments or questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Former makes a motion, does a second?
Second.
Former, Dr. Former, second, all in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Tac Guide Approval, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration seeks approval of the Tac Guide as presented.
Any comments or questions on the Tac Guide? Do I have a motion? Dr. Former makes a motion, does a second?
Second.
Rowan, second, all in favor, show of hands. I'll backtrack back to D there. Renovation, renovations to the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two staffing plan, Miss Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following proposed revisions to the twenty-one, twenty-two staffing plan are presented for your approval. Deletion of one kitchen manager at Wood. Addition of one custodian at Waynesville Middle School. One custodian at Waynesville High School and Middle School. That individual will be split between the two buildings. And one communication specialist in the Communications and Marketing Department. We request approval at this time, please.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Make that motion.
For our next motion, does a second?
Still move.
Dr. Former, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Construction Manager at Risk, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration requests approval of the contract agreement between Naba-Holtz and the Waynesville School District on the CMA at Risk as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Pondra makes a motion, do I have a second? Starred, second, all in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. And MSBA Policy and Procedure Updates, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had several policies and procedures last month. I received no questions over the, the course of the last few weeks, so we're going ahead and recommending approval of the policies and procedures and forms as stated in your board docs.
Do I have any comments or questions? And do I have a motion? Quinn makes a motion, does a second?
Second.
Dr. Former, second, all in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, President.
Quinn makes a motion, does I have a second?
Second.
Dan wants to go. Dan, second, all in favor, show of hands. We are adjourned.